I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order, October 2nd, 2019, 6:30 PM. Are we ready for the adoption of the amendments over the last meeting?
Sure.
Someone have a motion regarding the amendments?
I move we accept the meetings of the September 4th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections or additions? Here we go, none, all in favor, please?
Shall we do introductions, though?
Yeah, we can do that. Can we introduce ourselves, please?
Sure. Dave Burks.
Roger Lucide.
Rick Lyles.
John Tink.
John DeLeo.
Nelson Gill.
And they wanted attention. Well, they wanted us to, you know, snap to it.
Yeah, really.
It's a heavy gather up there.
The next time the business is a sketch plan for a major use site development plan entitled McMullen, for Richard McMullen, the proposal is to create a five lot gravel pit and install a driveway on an undeveloped, ninety-five acre property on the Bucksport Road, currently owned by Maurice Olivier. Tax map, thirty-one, lot forty-seven, in the rural industrial zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please? Want to come up to the, you can come to the table or the lectern, it's up to you. And for the benefit of anyone who is aware, a sketch plan is not a formal procedure. We make no decisions what it is as an opportunity to get feedback between the applicant and the planning board. The formal application comes later as a preliminary application where we made findings of whether the application is complete or not. So, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Richard McMullen, owner of McMullen Landscape, and currently interested in seeking a gravel pit, or approval for a gravel pit on Maurice's property, so wanted to, you know, go through the steps before, you know, purchase and sale and all that, so wanted to come in front of the planning board and see what was needed.
Do you have a purchase and sale agreement?
No.
Does he have standing to be here?
I, I've got a, a letter from the, from the owner that says I've...
Okay.
Yeah.
On the back of one of your handouts, I think.
It's okay, as long as he has standing to move, have to do everything over again.
Yeah, it was in.
Yeah.
So, do you have further information for us, then?
Uh, I would, I don't have any additional information beyond the packet I believe you have. Just interested in a, a five acre pit with upgrading the, the road that's currently there, the old road.
Are you aware of the letter that was sent to the planning board from the Santillo family?
Dwight just gave it to me, yes.
Okay. Because that will be something that will be on our minds.
Mm-hmm.
Jeff? You're nodding your head, I thought.
Oh, I was happy that he got a copy because I was just thinking, oh, I think we forgot to send him one.
That too. Or something like wanting to sign with someone, you know.
Yes.
Okay. Planning board members have questions?
Yeah, I have one. I drove out there today just to see where this is located, and nowhere on this map does it show where the existing road you're talking about, is there, can you, can you identify that on the plan here?
Uh, I, this...
I, I don't see it.
The big plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on the big plan, yeah.
Well, I see that, but it, when I drove out there and looked at it with my eyes, I didn't see a road.
It's all currently grown in, there's probably three to four inch sized, all there's growing over, in, up into the road that was there. I think it was currently logged off ten, fifteen years ago, so it's, it's quite grown in.
Yeah, because there's a, there's actually a guardrail that runs from Kane Way all the way up to the Woodland Road. So, is that road somewhere kind of a guardrail?
Yeah, the entrance is right next to that fire hydrant, which is just after Kane Way.
Okay.
Yeah.
The road is just before the start of that guardrail.
Okay, I, I just needed to get a reference where, where the actual access is. Because I was wondering about the folks living on Woodland Road, so.
And I have talked to the state about a change of use for the, the curb cut that was there for the logging application, and I would need to upgrade or fill out a new curb cut application, and he didn't think there would be any issues with that, so.
Okay. I haven't been to the, to the site, okay? Because I didn't know exactly where to find it. I guess the question I have about the entrance is, is there any relief along Route One, meaning any hills or whatever, that might provide, or make a site distance problem going into and out of that, the new driveway? And I ask that question of all of you, actually.
I'm not aware of one, it comes out. You've probably got, I'm just guessing, you've probably got four hundred fifty, five hundred feet looking up the Bucksport Road, because you're looking up that hill.
Okay.
And coming, coming from Ellsworth to Bucksport, it starts a level out there, but we, you know, we didn't go out major in, but I think it's plenty of...
I don't suspect there's going to be any, there's quite a bit of visibility.
Okay. And that, and that may well be, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not arguing with anybody. I would just caution, though, that, you know, it's one thing to have an intersection, which is what really you have, for, just for vehicles, and it's another thing where the traffic is basically trucks all the time. Because, you know, you're based on certain kinds of acceleration, deceleration rates and all that, and so what you need is more space than the, than the standard driveway, so, you know, if you can show that you have that, cool.
Okay.
I notice there's an, it's an existing trail. Does anyone else have rights to use that trail?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, you might want to, in a title search, check for that. Because if someone does have a right of way and you're impacting that, that could be a problem for you.
Okay. It appears that it's potentially an older snowmobile trail.
But still, if there is still, if in the past someone had rights to it, which still exists.
Yep.
You need to know about that.
Well, yeah, or the right of way, I mean, just, you know, even though it's an old abandoned snowmobile trail, they may well have had an easement to use it, right?
Yeah, right.
He said you were in the landscaping business?
Yes.
Do you plan to use this personal, but you, are you going to go public?
I, I would do both, yes, yeah. And, and realistically, I, I would feel that probably the process of, of getting approved for a pit, whether it be the curb cut through DEP, all the processes, I mean, it, I probably wouldn't even do anything in there for a year before we actually get started, and, you know, it'd take a fair amount of time, so.
And there's no, there's, you're not proposing any structure or anything on here, right?
No.
I mean, that's what I took from the application.
No, no structures, yeah.
So, would there be equipment stored on site? How's, I mean, can you describe the operation that you, you know, that you foresee here?
Well, currently, yeah.
I get what it's about.
Yeah, I mean, currently, I would say I'm a, I'm a small operation, I have two dump trucks and, and a couple guys, so, you know, traffic in and out of the pit's going to be quite limited on my end. Depending on where I'm working, I, I may or may not even venture over to the Bucksport Road to get my own gravel. You know, I currently purchase off the, the many, you know, suppliers in town, so in the pit itself, I've got a small, you know, screen, and there'd be a loader, so onsite, there'd be a loader and a screen.
So, the loader just, will probably just sit there, generally speaking?
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, I would definitely put a gate at the end of the road, you know, but that, that's really the, the idea at the moment. Be a small pit. The couple test holes I've dug doesn't show, you know, great results for, for gravel, there's a lot of, a lot of sand. So, it's, it's probably, there's a lot more sandy fill in there than there is gravel. So, it, it's definitely going to be a limited use on the product that's in there, so.
Will there be any refueling going on in the pit?
Of the loader and the screen, yeah.
Will you be storing fuel on site?
No.
Other questions?
Yes, I got, I think, I mean, gravel pits can be quite contentious, and I would hazard a guess that probably the chairman is the only one on the board, unless maybe Roger has participated in another gravel pit reviews. So, the majority of the board is, is new to gravel pits. One thing I've, it seems like, finding over the years, I mean, this has started, you, you want to start a five acre gravel pit, but gravel pits have a tendency to grow in size. And I think the big key here is, you know, to be a good neighbor, and you have some neighbors quite close by on, on Woodland Heights. And also the Santillos own, own a large piece of property, and they're concerned about that. You know, I don't know what your future plans are, but a five acre pit will, could grow, and I, I guess I would ask city staff to, maybe for the next meeting, educate us a little as to, you know, is a five acre pit the smallest, and then at what point does, you know, more oversight come into play, does DEP come into play on a five acre gravel pit? You know, kind of what those steps are, you know, I'm sure everybody's seen, you know, articles in the paper about Lemoine gravel pits, and it seems like they're forever arguing over those.
I did contact the DEP, there's a permit I need to fill out, an application. If I can go up to five acres with that, that single application, if I, if I exceed the footprint of five acres, then, then that really triggers a whole nother level of oversight from the state. Test wells and monitoring water and all that, so.
So, where do you go to the next step, you have to go through an additional set of hoops?
Yes, yeah, with, with staying under the five acres, I think they, they come around once or twice a year and just check in, make sure everything's how it's supposed to be, but once you, once the footprint gets abo, beyond that, there's a whole nother set of regulations.
When it goes above five acres, will it come back to the planning board also?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, one thing I'm, I'm keying in on is on buffers, having to deal with audio visual buffers, again, I'm talking about the surrounding properties. And I notice on, on the lot that you're interested in, half is rural, half is industrial. And I'm not exactly sure where the gravel pit, is it in, one is a border, you know, some of it in the rural zone, there's some in the industrial zone, but I understand it would be allowed in both, are there different regulations, review for the different zones, Dwight, yeah?
Be the same review process.
For the map for the actual application, we would expect to see where the zone boundary is.
Yeah, I, I, talking to Dwight, we thought it'd be best just to do a sketch plan to get started, and, and I would definitely need to hire a surveyor and have them.
Yeah, I'm just making sure they're aware of that.
Okay.
In the interest of full disclosure, a long, long time ago, I was the code officer for the town of Lemoine. I am overly, in my opinion, familiar with gravel pits. So, ask more questions, then.
Yeah.
I have asked the questions that I thought I should ask.
I mean, one thing, another things I'm concerned about is, I mean, you talked about gating it. It seems like when somebody puts in a gravel pit, or there's a gravel pit, it attracts recreational vehicle riders, ATVs, UTVs. And again, it's an issue with, with the neighbors. You know, people like to get in the gravel pits, scream up and down the banks, you know, you've got neighbors that, that are above you, from what I've been able to gather so far, because, you know, I'd like to see more information as far as the topo lines. You gave us that one map, but I'd like to see exactly how that relies to the houses on Woodland Heights, and also the Santillo property that, that they're concerned about. You know, do you plan on keeping, you know, record, those, those type of vehicles out? You know, is this something in the future, there's a knife slash the area, I mean, a couple miles down the road, you have an area that does mud runs. Again, a source of contention with neighbors. I look at hours of operation. In the, in the notes for the TRT, it referenced using the city's noise ordinance, chapter twenty-three. But I, but I also noticed that in the TRT, nobody from the police department was there, so I don't know if, if they've had, if they know they're going to be responsible for...
Well, they, they would be anyway, John, it falls under the backup alarms and things like that, and hours of operation.
My biggest concern with using the noise ordinance to control the noise in the pit has to do with hours of operation, because the noise ordinance basically says, you know, you can't have sound created from construction activities, which I would say that this falls into, between the hours of ten PM and six AM. And I would say that a gravel pit that operates from six AM to ten PM is not going to pass my muster.
And the planning board has, you have the option to any restrictions you want on that.
I'm just throwing this out here now to prepare yourself for, for issues that I have concern with, and I know the neighbors have concern with. I mean, there is a little bit of a buffer between, right now, between the Mo's property and Woodland Heights, but I just found out tonight that somebody may be cutting that lot forty-six, doing some wood harvesting there, so, I mean, that's going to add to the noise level to the houses, you know, kind of above the, above them on Woodland Heights. Again, just think about. I think I'm to the end of my list.
Okay.
All right. I don't have John's long experience with gravel pits, so here's my question. Is blasting ever an element in gravel pit operations, or do you ever see doing that out there?
Uh, I, I don't foresee it at the moment, I, I would say sometimes blasting happens if you hit a ledge floor. I, I don't believe that that's out there. Sometime, a lot of times gravel pits crush rock, but at the moment I don't have any interest in purchasing a crusher, so. It would, it would be a long time down the road, yeah.
I noticed in the TRT notes also that you guys specified that there should be, you know, more detailed survey and whatever, and setbacks and all that kind of good stuff, and I just want to make sure that you are going to do that.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah.
This is what, ninety-five acres, is that right?
Yes.
Nine acres?
Yep.
Something like that?
Yep.
If you, or if he, depending on which one of you guys I'm talking to, did something else with the other ninety, eighty-five, whatever acres are left after the gravel pit, then that would have to come back here, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, he just can't go willy-nilly, not that you would necessarily would.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and build something else or whatever, so it would have to come back.
Yeah, any, any different use other than gravel pit.
Okay.
Like, if Richard decided he wanted to, say he closed all his pit, closed all his pit, he's going to return the banks to a forty-five degree slope and vegetate it and close it out. Say he wanted to come back and put some duplexes in there or something, some housing, he'd have to come back to the planning board.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to be, I mean, that's what I thought, I just wanted to be clear that that was really the case.
And I can, I'm, I'm going to work with the DEP, but I think currently it, it may sound a little scarier than it does with ninety-five acres, but I think there's probably only fifteen or twenty that, that have gravel on it. So, it's not, it's not like someday where there's going to be a ninety-five acre gravel pit there. I, I think the, the land, the, the size of the lot is a lot larger than, than the actual gravel that's, that's in it, so.
Yeah, no, that, that seemed clear enough, right?
Yeah, 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 so.
The area that you've highlighted, that five acres, I mean, it's quite an elevation increase from, from where the road goes into your property to Woodland Heights. Now, your five acre box there, is, that must be getting into some of the elevation change?
Yes, yeah.
Where you're digging, that's actually going to be on the side of a hill, so, so to speak.
Right, basically, most property starts at the bottom of, of the hill there, and in, in the course of his property, I, I think there's generally a forty to fifty, sixty foot height difference in, in the one side of the property to the other. So, there's the potential, that's the potential for gravel.
Now, do you know, I mean, where this five acre block is, is that beyond the current houses on Woodland Heights, do you know? Or is it just to the east of them?
I, I don't currently know where they are located, so, yeah.
I mean, that, in my mind, I mean, that, I mean, you know, it'll show it on, on additional maps, I mean, you know, I'm looking at, if you're digging away aside of a hill and houses are above it, you know, what effect, if any, might that have on the hill that they're on?
Yeah.
Might be useful to, to have a map that shows actually that relief with the next closest house.
Well, you could put a distance from, from the lot, you know, the end, you know, there's obviously a lot in between, and then the state requires a fifty foot buffer that I can't, you know, I can't get within fifty feet of, of my line.
Okay.
Or Mo's line, but we could definitely put on there how far away the closest house is.
We, we did a little measuring on, on aerial photo, it seems to be about four hundred and fifty feet from the proposed pit to the nearest house. And of course, it's across another property, it's on a, the second property away.
Right.
Let me just interrupt the proceedings for a moment. This is a public hearing, and anyone that comments upon this matter, if you do wish to speak, we wait till you're recognized by the chair, and then come up to the lectern and identify yourself. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
My name is Reggie, I'm on forty-nine Woodland Road, which is probably two-thirds of the way up Woodland, it is Woodland Road, not Woodland Heights. They changed the name when they did the, whatever the...
Well, I'm sure you have one, I've been around.
A couple of thi, I would assume you're going to make the gravel pit where it starts to go uphill from, which is probably pretty much opposite from where the houses are, it's before you reach the end of the road. Because I ski down through there, there's an existing trail down through there.
Yeah.
And I cross-country ski down through there. And also, I, and I didn't go down through there this year, but last year, there was evidence of beavers down there, close to the road. Are they, are they still there, or?
I didn't see any, but I, I am currently talking to the DEP on the process for the change of use for that, that road, and what we need to do to get through there, so, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that you should be doing is checking to see if there are any wetlands and identifying them on the map.
The, yeah, that lower section is definitely a wetland.
Yeah, there's a stream that comes down from the Santillo property and goes on to that property.
It's even more complicated, the fact that this is a stream doesn't make it a wetland, there are...
Yeah.
Any number of factors that...
Yeah. And, and my only other concern would be, and he mentioned a crusher, which would be years down the road, but that would have to come back before the planning board, if a crusher was going to be used. My only concern is noise, I have no problem with it.
No, that wouldn't come back, come to the planning board, but...
So, that's not a different...
Noise issue, that's a police matter.
Okay.
So, you know, there's recourse there.
Okay. I mean, personally, I have a problem with a, a small gravel pit, just noise issues would be my only concern.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak, please?
I am Casey Hardwick, and I live at nineteen Woodland Road, so I'm at, I'm the very first house on the right as you pull onto Woodland Road. And I've lived there for about twenty years. I am a real estate agent, and I, so I know quite heavily how gravel pits can affect property values and the sellability of homes within their close proximity. I've had to sell properties in other towns where gravel pits were three times to four times the distance off of the back of my property line, and buyers didn't want to have anything to do with it because it was a functioning gravel pit. There is existing trails I can get from the back of my yard to, all the way to Branch Pond. So, there are presently a good majority of the people on our road who use those trails and have for twenty-plus years. ATVs, skiing, walking, hunting, you know, those, whatever they've been doing, they've been used. You know, the, the property that runs up the back of us was a twenty-two acre parcel that was sold in May to a person by the name of Jeffrey Clark from Surrey. I've not been able to figure out how to reach him because I've been trying to determine what he plans to do with that property. Someone who believes, they know who he is, did say that he is a logger. So, my fear is that they're going to log the property right directly behind us and open us up to a gravel pit. Once it's a gravel pit, it's going to be a gravel pit, and then we have really, during the daytime, no, no, no control over whether he has a crusher, the noise, the dump truck tailgate slamming. If you're in Lemoine, those properties that are on the Shore Road, not on Shore Road, Douglas Highway, that run along Jordan River, my office has had those listed for a very long time, and they're not moving. You know, they're, it, it does create a big stigma for properties anywhere close to there. You know, I'm not up on the top end, I'm on the low end, and, you know, I... We, we, when they cleared the lot that he's proposing to put this on, you know, it changed the deer patterns. There were tons of deer crossing the Bucksport Road right at the base of that hill because they opened them up wide. We have, you know, thirty or forty deer in the back of our lots, all winter long, that bed down. And I think, you know, between logging and the, the gravel pit option, that's all going to change it again and impact the critters that are out back. I think you guys, you were talking, I can't remember what, you had some questions that triggered, triggered other thoughts of mine, but now I can't, I lost my train of thought.
If I could just comment on the issue of property values. It's not something the planning board has any jurisdiction of, there's nothing in our ordinances that allow us to address that. So, it's not really a planning board issue, and maybe it should be, but it isn't.
Well, I just ask that you be mindful.
Yes.
That it does have a significant effect on the values of homes. You know, there's been a number of homes on Woodland Road sell this year, and, you know, those people bought homes in a rural community. And, you know, I moved in and we have not had anything around us, you know, industrial type nature. Bob Minet's magazine is across the road down the hill, down a long dirt road. You know, we do hear the mud trucks that are down at the, the mud runs. We hear Bob Minet's blasting occasionally, you know, so this is just another added thing that's right in our backyard.
Now, for both of you, the issue of the use of the existing trails, if it can be proven that they've been used for such, for a certain period, that can trigger a right to use them by, by other people. So, that's something you should be aware of, because that will impact your decisions to whether this is a viable thing, whether you should buy the property. So, sort of, let's say, survey, lawyer, question.
Okay. I mean, I know there's some trails that come out on the Red Bridge Road, I don't know if...
These are them.
I think they, mainly they're on the Santillo's property, I don't know if they cut across...
We, we cut across all of it, all the way up through.
Through the Oliver piece.
Right?
Yeah, I, I don't think they go across Santillo's, but they're not used much anymore. I, I go out there and very rarely see a track.
But for you...
They're, they're, like I've just said, like he stated, the road is growing up, and all this, the whole trail is becoming yellow.
But for you, you should make sure that your, that your property rights will be free and clear, and not someone say, oh, no, I have a right to, you can't do that gravel because you, you erased the road, so.
Okay.
If I were doing this, something I would look at. There, there are some screening requirements, right? Kick in, in terms of screening this use from adjacent property owners? If this were Lemoine, I would say yes, Ellsworth's...
The state requires a fifty foot buffer, so I...
Yeah, that's just a buffer, that doesn't...
Yeah, that's just a buffer that doesn't, I mean, that's just space though, right?
It's a wooded buffer.
Yeah, it's a wooded, it's.
But is a wooded buffer required, or is it just what's there now?
That's what the, yeah.
And I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, the, the land use ordinance talks about buffers, not in relation to just gravel pits, but in general.
Right.
But there aren't too many real hard guidelines about it.
Right.
May I ask, um, you a question?
Sure.
Are you, where they've previously cut that property that you're proposing to put this on, are you planning to allow that lower portion, before you get up to the top of that hill, to completely grow back in? Or are you gonna maintain it as clear, you know, to keep it cleared?
Uh, currently, I, I think there's gonna be very little that I can do with that lower section, uh, because of how wet it is. Um, I have met with the DEP and, um, it, and I think realistically, the first twenty, twenty-five acres of land is, is just about unusable. Uh, it's too wet. So there, there really won't be anything happening there, uh, 'cause I, I can't develop the.
Okay, yeah, 'cause the, it's from the back of my line to the edge, sorry, to the edge of where the cut tree line is going up along, between, that's about three hundred and sixty-five feet, or three sixty, from my back line to the edge of that clearing. So, you know, and, and then if, if that twenty-two acres does get cleared, then we're just wide open.
I would, I would also just point out that, to, you know, that, that what he's proposing isn't allowed use, as far as I can tell, in one or both of those zones, the rural or the industrial. So, so, you know, that's, I guess from your perspective, that's the bad news.
Yeah, it is, it is very bad news, because that's, you know, when you, when you go into a rural zone, you wouldn't, or, I think it was, is it still R two, considered R two, Dwight?
No, it's just rural now.
So, I, was, when it was R two, was that pretty much residential use?
Uh, I can't remember that.
'Cause I was thinking that when I purchased the property, it was R two zoning, and that was, I think, a pretty strict residential-only use.
Well, I think we've always allowed gravel pits. And then, it was, I think, I believe R one was the downtown district.
R two also allows agriculture and such.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's not mining.
I can find that out for the next meeting.
So long ago now, but it may well have.
Mm-hmm. So, well, that's, I mean, that was, those are my thoughts. I don't really wanna be wide open to a gravel pit. I didn't buy the property to be wide open to a gravel pit, and coming from the real estate aspect of it, it's gonna make the properties very hard to be, you know, marketed well when people can all of a sudden look at an aerial image and say, oh, there's a gravel pit. I don't, I'm not interested. So that is gonna be a big factor. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Hearing done, I shall close the public hearing, and applicant planning board, do we have any more things to talk about?
I'm just, Rick, uh, in talking about the buffers, I mean, if you look at eight oh one point five point D, and that's, I think, where you would see the issue with the buffers, they go to audiovisual effect on the neighbors and stuff. And how it impacts, you know, neighboring properties.
Yeah, and right, as they go through there, I mean, it's a very opening thing, though. It says buffers in the form of fences, landscaping, berms, berms and mounds. I mean, those are things.
Right.
As opposed to just the woods that are there, would be my point. The other thing, and looking ahead, um, this would come up again for the preliminary whatever, and then the final, right? And in between those two things, we could do a site visit as necessary, right? And, and between those two would be.
That would be set up at the preliminary.
Right, okay. So I'm just holding that as a, as a.
Yeah.
Something to think about going forward.
So you have to wear your tour guide hat.
In case that's different.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
Anything else? Do you have any further questions for us? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And the next item on the, uh, agenda, I assume there are no MyLars assigned, or there are? Oh, yes, okay. Then shall we do the usual?
I don't make a motion.
Yeah, probably, I'm gonna go talk tomorrow.
Do we wanna speak at all about, uh, the checklist thing?
Here for the next, planning.
Unless someone else wishes.
Okay, I'm good.
I think we.
Go bring it first.
Well, there, there is that order, that Seaboard track.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got it now, they're getting in.
And I, and I'm good with that.
We get in there.
So, there's.
Talking about it in between.
Well, there was almost a motion made.
There actually was a motion made that we adjourn as soon as the MyLars are signed. Is there a second to that?
Second act.
Any discussion? Okay, but assign the MyLars.